Okay, we will call this meeting of the April Disseminates Committee on Housing and Homelessness, the special meeting to order. I'll have Travis please call the role.
Ms. Haller? Mr. Constant?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy? Ms. LaFrance? Mr. Perez Verdia? Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
She is excused.
Mr. Amer?
Present.
Mr. Willington?
Here.
And Ms. Appleton?
Here, thank you Travis. I believe we have a few more members joining us and we'll make our own when they arrive. So today's item of business is a presentation from the administration on its request for an appropriation for purposes of a homeless and trans age shelter. And as way of background, I called this meeting after the new mayor's press conference on Thursday, stating there would be an appropriation request for $15 million in the agenda. The preliminary agenda was released and there was not an appropriation request that I saw. So I thought we would start today by giving an update on whether or not there will be an appropriation item. And then with their objection from the members, I came with a list of questions to get in conversation, but with plenty of room for additional questions. And we've been joined by Ms. Haller. So I will turn it over to Dr. Morris for the administration to give us an update on the appropriation item.
Good morning, thank you. Thanks again for having us here for this. It's our fourth meeting on this topic. Three meetings we've had before we took office. And then thank you for hosting. In these past conversations, we've talked a lot about different types of shelters and navigation centers and theories that makes a lot of different places to locate a shelter. But fundamentally for me, the bottom line is that last year the city did an experiment and we did some good. And for the first time, the city took ownership of sheltering the unhoused. And it made some good differences in our community. And we're faced with the question that as COVID, which was the reason, the given reason to move that warrants down, vaccinations and previous struggle with them rise up. Does that mean that need is gone? Or does it mean that we're going to change what we're doing? Or are we going to continue to build on that negative work that was done largely at the assembly last year? We're here to talk about the cost of things and where we can fund them on the fair degree. We have a firm cost for the structure itself. That's 5.3 million. It breaks down slightly higher than what we were hoping to see because of firework requirements that need to be turned into two buildings. It also adds more to overdues in great work on the inside in response to shelter providers and other experts' recommendations over the past few weeks. As we mentioned before, it's an iterative process and we continue to evolve. But that 5.3 million needs to ship up here if it's manufactured. In addition to that, there are big construction costs. So many construction costs are embedded in particular, there's an expert, they send up, two experts this day to guide. We're expecting it to come in somewhere around 10 million dollars. Still don't have firm numbers for that yet because we haven't executed the RFP process for it. As far as the funds go, we have identified some sources of funding. One is from the fund balance, another from Parks Recreation Beagle Kill Innovation, and the last is from the maintenance and operations fleet and inventory.
Dr. Morris, I need to know for the record at 12:04, we are joined by Ms. Kennedy and Ms. LaFrance. Please continue, and we actually have some specific questions. Clarifying question for Mr. Constant first.
Thank you. Mr. Morris, you said 10 million was that 10 million minus the 5.3 or 10 million on top of the 5.3?
10 million on top of the 5.3.
Thank you.
And any other questions?
Okay, thank you. So what we, when you mentioned fund balance, were you talking about the remaining balance that was previously appropriated for purchases of buildings using CARES Act and has now moved into the fund balance?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. So I have a series of questions that are really meant to talk about this appropriation, which the first is, when can we expect the appropriation and the actual document, the AO, to be introduced or in the organs of the resolution so we can see the specific line items?
Thank you, I need to follow up for him. As we're receiving.
Yes, and Mr. Campbell, let me just join us at microphone.
All right, yeah, this one friend of yours, how we should just pay the residency. Madam Chair, we have developed, last week we worked on the appropriation, sent it to the OAB and the CFO. It was supposed to come out by noon time Friday, it did not come out, it is final stages. And I believe it's actually done right now, I just wanted to have the meeting today.
Okay, so we'll hopefully look for that mandate now, which the end of that line is noon this Friday.
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay, great, and will this be a public hearing item?
This is appropriation that we're asking you to take action without a publisher.
Without a publisher?
Without a publisher. This money we're asking to take from appropriation is re-appropriated in this process.
Mr. Dunbar, here, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Morris, so the $10 million for construction, I believe we heard today from Chief McCoy that there was about $4 million was the estimate for moving the impound lot. Is that included in the next $10 million or are there additional $4 million costs for moving that lot?
So that's done from Chief McCoy, I believe that would probably come in a fraction of that cost for moving cars. Yes, that would be included in the approximately $10 million in charge of moving cars.
Well, not just moving cars, but building the new site across the road. That's part of that $10 million?
There's very robust fencing, there's robust security cameras, there's a big security system goes into it. Please know that the same with the name of the cars. Collectively moving cars, we expect to leave that down to the middle thing for approximately $10 million.
I received a written response to some inquiries about moving impound lot from Chief McCoy today. I will forward that to all members, I apologize, I was unable to get that up for this meeting. So just to continue on the questions I had, and so the next is, will there be a request for proposal for the structure and/or the construction work to erect the structure? Put out for solicitations?
I believe that there's the intention to put the construction of the structure out for RFP. The structure itself, I don't know that we're going to find another vendor that can manufacture this structure, these specifications as quickly.
Okay, so I have been made aware of at least one local based company that is interested in, and we can make the connection in addition to what other structure company may be looking at, just so that you are aware of it, so we're making sure we file a couple of appropriate titles and procurement rules. So those were the primary questions I had about the acquisition of the structure and the appropriation item. I have some additional questions more towards operations, but before we switch topics, I thought I would see your questions. Mr. Willington?
Thanks, I think I missed a step. So you said that you have affirmed 5.3 million for the sprung structure, including shipping, I think, and then 10 million for everything else?
Yeah, approximately 10 million for everything else, the site prep, the HVAC, building was there.
So then it's, so it'd be 15.3 million for everything or 10 million for everything?
Approximately 15.3 million.
Okay.
Okay, I see no one else in the queue with regard, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the 5.3 million dollars for the structure, does that include, so there's a lot of other sort of purposes that you intend to decide for the structure, like internal, for example, you floated the idea of moving the sleep off center there, doing medical detox there. So for things inside the structure, does that include then 5.3 million to get them set up for the medical detox?
Many of them, it includes the walls that divide the building up into smaller buildings and the structure itself. The other 10 million isn't just for moving dirt and pouring concrete, it's also for the internal evasions and things like that that are required and furnishings as well. Or should it be in addition to that, I would expect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Morris, your response raises another question for me. Moving dirt, pouring concrete, can you talk to me a little bit about what the site appropriation is going to be for the structure and any permits that are required and what the process is over your process for obtaining those permits?
I'm certainly no expert on construction. My wife are trying to build a house now, we've been at it for two weeks, we're already looking behind. The handover, but the, as far as the permits go, there was an existing permit for the site, which as a vision, I was informed with the grant extension for. And there are some more permanent things to do, leave that permanent, but none of those considered to be buried. As far as the site prep goes, I have to leave that to the engineers. I know there are different options for how to give it, but I don't know what will be the level of that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Can you say there are some additional permit steps? So I guess all preferences was saying, this is the body that loves specificity. So can you tell me a little bit more about the existing permit that have granted, the extension granted, and exactly what kind of permit that is and what permits you can do?
Well, this, the existing permit was for the apartment lot that's there now. And the structure sits on top of the existing apartment lot. And so it's sort of a common sense that whatever weapon is there has to mitigate it. The additional steps, I'm going to have to get back to you on, I'll refer all the details of that from the email. But I'll get that to you.
Great, I also love the follow-up on the site preparation. Mr. Constant?
Yeah, actually, that was the question, what I think I understand, I just heard as far as that there's no intention to go off the bat and curtail this?
I believe that the rest of the infrastructure facility is this.
Dr. Morris, this is my son, I have a question in regards to pricing. It sounds like we don't really know the cost. And I hear you throwing out the numbers, but it sounds like it's a base cost. And my concern is the costs are going to go up and up and up and I don't see anything actually, I don't mind. Mr. Dunbar had referred to furniture, you said there were walls, but there is a lot that goes into building this facility in the inside. Can you break it down a little bit more?
I can specifically break down the cost of the structure, the 5.3, I can't do any specific breakdown for the construction cost to hold that in?
Okay, thank you.
Can I do that instead of, or can send it to you?
I think sending us the breakdown of the structure cost would be very helpful. I, or do you want to break it down now, is that the construction cost?
Correct, I would like to go ahead and see it in writing, but I think it would be great for the public to hear the breakdown as well.
Okay, so it's two buildings. Structure one, the structure and accessories is above, 1.745 million dollars. Technical consultant looking at construction, 98,900 dollars. Delivery, 153,000 dollars. Having a color open white, 47,000 dollars. Special door, 39,000 dollars. A corridor to connect two buildings, 50,000, 31 dollars. A flat end on the building, 11,921 dollars. Building walls inside, 228,000 dollars. Engineer drawings, 800 dollars. Structure number two. It's, it's building costs 1.766 million dollars. Technical consultant for it is 114,900 dollars. Shipping for it, 169,108 dollars. Engineer drawings, 800. Color, 47,000. Flat end, 11,21. And the walls on the inside, 869,590 dollars.
Thank you. So I was hoping to turn now to the question of FEMA reimbursement and operations, if that's okay, or if there are any questions about the physical plant and the structure before we move on. Mr. Willington?
Thanks, so I'm not sure if they fit in a category, but one, you know, I assume that you could use some of the stuff, it's a sole of a dream, there's costs and those kinds of things. Is that part of your intent is to move that stuff over to a new location?
Well, we love to move things over, particularly the fencing that's already existing apartment lot and use it for either the fencing of the new place for the impacted cars or not. As far as the bits, the sole of those are actually the property of Beans. So if Beans has awarded the contract to provide services, we'd be able to reuse those bits. If not, then we have to go back.
You know, I'm a little concerned, I mean, you have to have some strong justification for sole source for the structure. And if there's a local vendor that they offer something similar, that could really tie things up. I remember the process if they challenged the word of sole source, but that could delay things substantially. I mean, I'm sure you pulled this over, I'm sure assurance that you can do a sole source.
Well, the vagaries of sole sourcing, which is crazy, but as far as the local vendors, we've actually talked for them. And I actually have one in from one today, who took a ton of us in this proposal. It's a different type of structure, and we need to talk to them more about how long it would take them to build it and so forth. But we're going to investigate. I don't know what the process, the new school rules are for acquiring this.
I might be able to help just a little bit. We have not ruled out the RFP process, so I don't want people to be here thinking that it's already a sole source selection. We built our criteria for what we need out there based on what sprung structures has available. We're going to be looking at whether that is a competitive process or whether it's sole source. And before that, when that decision is made, we certainly be advising, but I just don't want to leave you there saying we've already selected a vendor with a sole source contract, that's not correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So obviously there have been a number of discussions in Eastham Bridge and in the Cape Harbor and other places that are near this mass shelter. And I think there is a sense from a lot of what I speak with, that a smaller facility, you know, 100 to 150 beds would be more appropriate. And you did that in the elastic facility, which is also 100, you know, 125, 150 beds. You get very close to the same number of beds plus the housing strategy. I think there's a desire in the public to see us sort of work together, compromise. So my question is, you've got 15.3 million dollar price tag, the elastic load is below 5 million. So then you've identified additional 10 million. Are you investigating a smaller option at that location? A smaller option at that location that would come in under that 10 million dollar price tag?
We've had a lot of conversations about doing things at other locations that we're doing in smaller. I'm going to point out a couple of things. One, the size of this building allows us to do other things than just help homeless folks. It's a place to, for disaster response, it's a place to store food. And it has the ability to be a hub for treatment and other services for homeless people. When you look at the numbers for how many people need to be sheltered, I think there's, if we want to do it in small shelters, it takes quite a few, it takes more than two. And because of that, that leaves us too, advocate a challenge for a larger center of this facility.
Dr. Morris, I'm going to follow up. Is it possible to create this shelter for up to 200 people for a smaller price tag? Or is the price tag for the structure and the construction not the same regardless of how many people it may house? Or a shelter?
If we move us forward, maybe it would cost less.
Do you have the pricing for whatever cost for a 200 person or less facility?
I don't have the construction cost for it, but the, the cost for the building to have as many people would be about 3 million dollars, 2.97.
Thank you. So I have an additional follow-up question. In the current request, you mentioned Beagle Kill Innovation and CARES Act fund balance. If my math is correct, that is only about 11.5 million and doesn't add up to the full 15 million dollars of appropriated funds. What other sources may you be looking at to make up the difference?
On this, on this list, I've got the maintenance and operations fleet inventory, but the Beagle Kill was listed at 3.5 million. And the fund balance is at 1.25 million.
Can you restate the fund balance number again, please?
11 million 250,000.
Thank you. All right, I was going to now turn to the operations and FEMA. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else for the queue. So, oh, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Dr. Morris, or if any of the administration wants to answer this question, are we getting any assistance from the state in regards to this building? Or your homeless planning?
I would say that the state is going to work really well, you know, in a variety of ways. Our homeless plan isn't just for April disseminates, it's for the entire state, and the state of the appreciation.
Madam Chair, this is great.
And Mr. Campbell, answer that question?
I'll add a little more, because yes, we have talked with the government of the administration, we've talked with a number of the commissioners. They are looking for opportunities as they come through their budget process to identify any potential funds. We do not have at this time any funds identified that we are specifically asking for to be considered as appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to know for the record, we've been joined by Mr. Perez Verdia. So, sure, Mr. Constant?
Thank you. Just in the context of where funds are coming from, I have a way of reminding whether or not to support this overall concept that I suggested that problems with scale, but concept is something we can work out. But I want people to understand that when we talk about the quote Beagle Kill mitigation program, what that program is, over the last four years, it's been a massive Beagle Kill across the community, across the region. And what we set out to do after the 2019 terrible fire, actually right at 200 hours, where this site is proposed to go in, that nearly frightened scores, it's gone hundreds of homes and threw people out of their homes. What that project does is targets the urban wildland airways in the municipality on public plants that removes the fuel that may burn down homes and set hundreds or more people homeless in one terrible outbreak that should have they come. So from emergency preparation, I understand we have to look at the conversation about, does it cost, you know, what does it cost to get homeless individuals off the street? But that project was not just a fancy, let's take down Beagle Kill because they're trees. It's actually saving people's homes from being burned down on municipal lands or near municipal lands that are covered in fuel.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Okay, I'm now going to turn to FEMA. So for me, the key issue at this point is how long mass shelter is reasonable and necessary for the COVID-19 response versus sheltering individuals who are experiencing homelessness not due to COVID-19. With the unique CDC reduction in congregate shelter social distancing requirements in other big cities like New York starting to draw down on non-congregant facilities, what's the plan to shrink the overall mass care operation? Or is there a plan to shrink mass care operation versus just move its location?
Well, the preceding administration has a mass care transition plan. And it relies heavily on efforts to house folks as a 4 million dollar grant to with a goal of housing 75 people out of the shelter. We share the belief that housing is the solution to the problem. We don't think that we're going to be successful with that on a timeline that it's done before winter. So the plan is primarily to shift this capacity from a facility that is no longer sustainable to one that's designed to do it.
Madam Chair, this is great handle, I could just add to Dr. Morris. Because the focus of your question is where we all want to be as well. As Dr. Morris said, this is a temporary shelter because we have winter coming upon us. We don't have the housing, we don't have the treatment programs all integrated yet, as a community, not as just one administration. So our objective is to have this, a increasing number of people needing this facility over time as those people move into jobs, move into homes, get rehabilitated, move into the medical care they need. So it is not intended that this would be a long-term mass shelter for homeless.
Thank you. Is there an intent to seek FEMA reimbursement by the operations once it moves to this location? And if so, for how long?
We do not have plans to ask for FEMA reimbursement.
Okay, how do we plan to fund the operations of this facility?
We will be looking for, as we've developed next year's budget, we'll be looking for that as part of what we have to provide from the city. We'll be looking at state support funding, as I've mentioned, we were already talking to the W administration about some funding opportunities. We will look for federal funding, we will be looking for a lot of different money avenues that we've used in the past in the city for health and human services.
Thank you for that. I guess I'm most curious, you know, we're 93 days until October 7th, which I believe is the first schedule of the COVID-19, so we will need to turn this facility on, should it move forward prior to next year's budgeting. So how was the interim plan for funding the shelter from the day it turns on through the end of 2021? And what might our projected cost be? Thank you.
As for the projected costs, we're currently extending, we're spending $1.7 million a month between mass care and non-congregant shelters here in town for the transition line up. I would expect our cost to come in a good bit less than that. I would expect it to be around 12 million a year. But I don't have a good data to support that because we haven't done any RFP or bid process for services.
I have one more question on operations and then I'll open up the queue, not to the exclusion now. I just have heart of watching and asking the question at the same time. So on this cost of 12 million a year, currently the assembly is funded through the alcohol tax and operating funds, funding for a shelter of about 150 individuals for operating dollars plus day engagement or navigation and an additional $500,000 add-on. Where might we find 12 million dollars that we can count on here over here, particularly in 2021, that portion all about when we're not going to seek FEMA reimbursement?
Madam Chair, this is great handle, it came over here. That's part of the challenge that we, both the administration and Assembly, have on building the 2021 budget. We just started the process of looking at what services we are going to be providing for 2021. But I want to add, you know, that's one thing we're going to do within the city. We obviously have to have some city resources. But we talked about the state resources as well. And for the remainder of this year, I mentioned, we are in conversations with the W administration. We're hoping that they will be able to identify some funds that can be used this year. But we're also talking with them as long as I can recognize. rest in the delegation about funding for next year. It's premature for me to offer that there's anything on the table because there isn't, but I want to give you the reassurance that we're looking at not just making this the municipality paying for it, but having a broad cross-section of revenues available to make it happen. But the footnote, bottom line is, this is the first time really the municipalities, as Bonnie said, we have to put some skin in the game. We do have to find within our budget some funding to make this work because the homeless issue is an issue for Angerge. But I believe the state understands it's an issue for the state and they want to participate with it. So you'll get much more clarity on that as we develop what the revenue streams want to be in the future. But it's not just going to be the city, but it is going to include some city funds.
Thank you, I appreciate the answer. I will just note that when I came on the body two years ago, there was less than $500,000 in the budget and that has exponentially increased in the past two years. So the city has made an investment in these services. I believe we have, Ms. Allen in the queue, and Mr. Constance.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. You usually answer all my questions when you just start your speaking. So I was putting the queue already. So I guess my question is, our question is, we're having, you're looking at the future, as Dr. Morris had already mentioned it, in regards to a dual purpose. Is that what we're aiming for? So when we do put up this temporary facility and spend upwards to probably close to 20 million, there is a possibility we can have a dual purpose for it. My other question, this would be the question to you. Why wouldn't you want to use FEMA?
I guess I'll answer that through the chair. I didn't mean to indicate we don't want to use FEMA. We have not identified any FEMA funding or stream at this time. When I mentioned federal money, that's kind of what I was hoping, that we will be able to find a stream and we'll support this. So I didn't mean to exclude, we are not interested in FEMA money. Because, yes, one of the other options that we want to use this facility for in the long term is for emergency shelter, for mass casualties, mass activities, earthquakes, things that may happen in Angerge. So we want to use this facility from the very beginning to store some things like MREs, food that you could have available. We want to make this facility a broader facility than just a homeless shelter. And as we scale out the number of occupants in the shelter over time, we want to convert that and have more capability for responding to the cities' needs.
Yes, and Mr. Wellington, you wanted to get a queue break. Okay.
Thank you for that. One of my concerns is the amount of individuals in there. If it goes from 400, 200 to 1,000, you're looking at technically a small city. I'm very concerned about the staffing. I hear about the RFP, but you have to find people to staff this facility. I have spoken to APD and they are also concerned. And they think that the amount of individuals, the number of individuals is, for me, a concern.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Constance.
Thank you. Ms. Allen exactly asked my question. No, we seek FEMA reimbursement. So I think you answered that question. And I would reiterate what Ms. Allen suggested, that if we pass an alcohol tax, the voters that help Angerge has a stake in homelessness. And that was done quite some time ago. So glad to have you on the team to try to solve this problem and we're out of this job. Thanks.
Mr. Wellington.
Thanks. So my puzzle, probably more of my ignorance on this, but, you know, why wouldn't FEMA money be available for this? If we use it to operate in the Sullivan, we're simply moving it somewhere else. And I understand that in September, the 100% reimbursement goes away, but we still have, you know, 75%. And I hear the state will pick up the other 25. It sounds like a real deal. So do you, why wouldn't it not apply at this location?
I think that what we were talking about was for sustainable next year, the year after funding shrinks. And then FEMA is probably not going to be appropriate for that. But there's no reason to let the free money go away for the fall while we have it. And as you pointed out exactly, we're using FEMA money now for funding operations at Sullivan. There's no reason to think that we would be able to do that at this facility. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wellington. Mr. Perez for DIA.
Thank you. So just a few questions. I apologize for being late as I did with some of the previous conversations. So if I ask a question that's already been asked. First, one of the priorities that I've heard from your administration is that, is that one of the priorities is to address visible homelessness. That that is, that is a concern by the public and concern of your administration. How is this facility going to address visible homelessness? How is this going to address that specific problem for public?
Two ways. One, it builds on the demonstrated success of the Sullivan agreement, where we've had enough shelter capacity to allow parks and recreation departments to actually have aid camps faster than they're able to be created. And so we would be able to do that probably for the first time in the winter. Second, and I think for me more, perhaps even more importantly, it gives us as a community the, a bit of moral higher where we can go to a person on the street, not with law enforcement, but with someone with a different uniform or a civilian shirt, and say, hey, do you really want to stay here? We've got a better place for you. And I think that that is invaluable as well. But is there, is there some law that they're enforcing because we built the shelter or something like that? Absolutely.
Okay, so just want to clear that there is an expectation that the public will see a visible difference in homelessness once this is built and up and running. Is that, is that correct?
Absolutely. That component has been in other cities. And as far as I've known, the difference in uniforms is successful in reducing the visible homelessness. It's not the solution. And we're not proposing that it is. But it does, it does significantly impact that one piece.
Right, I could just do a few more things. The other piece that's important is that I think, you know, there are lots of people out there who know that are experts in this field and it's not, it's not me. And so I guess, I think this question is a masterful, but can you talk to us about the support that you have for this project from people like the Leadership Council, from the Coalition in Home Homelessness, the providers and people that have been working on this for decades? Do you have the support of the community that has been working on these issues? Do they feel like that this is the right step forward?
I believe we do, in short, because we've been working within forward for some months now on this. Many, many of the, there are many different providers and they have many different opinions. And the city has for a period of time been looking at the geographically distributed, distributed small more shelters. And this is a little different than that because the goal is different. The goal is everyone, and that takes you down a different path. And I think that we have a number of service providers who want to work at this facility and help it be successful. Even folks who say, you know, I think there's a better way, but let's get this going. I think Mr. Constance actually said it best. You know, don't let the perfect be the victim of good. Or good be, you know, something like that. He said it a lot, yeah. And knowing what you said, you know, this is, homelessness is an extraordinary thing in that nearly everyone, except perhaps me, believes they're an expert in homelessness. And the more I learn about it, the more I realize there is a number. And it's a tough problem here. When you're out talking to people and they, everyone has an idea of how to solve it, but they also believe it can't be solved. That's a tough thing to do. But I also want to talk to people who want to help, like keep meeting them at all sorts of places. And so, and that's why I can kind of go and say, yes, we've got a lot of support for this part. It's like you find the people who say, well, you know.
Great, two more. Next one is Golden Lion and Elastiglove. Can you, that was initially part of the sort of long-term work. Can you give us an update on those two? Are those projects going to move forward? Not going to move forward? What is the status of the Golden Lion Treatment Center and the Elastiglove location on the tour?
Madam Chair, this is Craig Campbell. So the Elastiglove, we haven't totally tried and made a decision on that. And obviously with this funding, and we're looking for that as part of our solution, we are not inclined this time to go forward with the Elastiglove. But we haven't said no yet. We want to evaluate that a little more compared to what we're offering with our solution. But the Golden Lion is a kind of separate issue. That funding was done differently through the MLD money. We are looking at that as a separate issue and we'll get back to if we decide to activate that or to do something else with it.
Okay, so no, no decision made here at this one?
Correct.
Okay. And then just the last piece, and that is that it seems that the outreach, you and I have had this interaction before, the outreach piece is vital to the success of this navigation center, to actually connect with people and get them there, that sort of thing. That infrastructure is currently not in place. So are you going to come back to us and ask for additional funding to fund that piece? Because based on what I've heard in the state of the past, the, without the net, the outreach piece, the likelihood of getting folks to this center and treating them in the way that Jopower Way seems to be unlikely. Can you speak to that in terms of where the funding and what the plan is to boost up our outreach to this population?
Yes, and I would submit that outreach is necessary to any homeless strategy, whether it be housing first or six different shelters or this center. In short, to answer your question, clearly very into this politics thing, no, I don't expect we're going to need to come ask you for some more money for that. And the main reason is, is you guys have already sent something on that and we applaud it. And you call it something different, the mental health crisis teams. I think that that's something that we can leverage to use for outreach. I think there are a number of private charities in town that are already doing it, and we can expand on that. And I think that's a good way to leverage folks with homeless lived experience and get them out there. And I don't know that they're going to be, really, I would be very surprised there to see if they ask for money for that topic. You didn't ask, but there's a third piece that's also important. And that is, we really need to improve our IT system, our patient IS system. Currently, it meets its requirements for reporting, but it does not meet what we need to be able to effectively outreach and truly do coordination with people. So that one, I might need to come and ask for a little money. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mr. Perez for DIA. I will note that in the alcohol tax budget, there is specific funding for outreach. Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, just in talking about this funding, what I haven't really heard is whether or not there's been a conversation about kind of a threshold or the maximum amount to which the administration believes that we may have to go funding-wise. And, you know, obviously, I believe there's absolutely a good faith effort to, to address the issue of homelessness with those who aren't receiving services, you know. So in other words, make this newer approach, one that's more comprehensive and brings in a lot more people that we know aren't being served. So I would fully expect for that to cost more. But I wondered if the administration had actually thought about to what extent would they potentially want to go with costs, with expenses? Has there been any threshold? Has there been a maximum amount of funding that you think needs to go toward this effort? Is there a per-person dollar amount by which you could potentially do all the things that we want to do? So you may not be able to answer that question right now, but I just wondered if anybody had, had kind of wrestled with some of those numbers? And really, there was a thought about to what extent was the administration willing to go in order to try to really solve, well, get a handle on and then potentially solve the homelessness issue? Thank you.
The, I believe it's okay to say, the mayor and I agree that we have one person die on the streets that because they didn't have a place to sleep this morning, that'd be telling for us. It has not been tasked and given to me to determine the upper limit of spending on. The tasking is, how do we help get a bed for everyone? To be frank, I think this is going to cost us less than $1 million. The literature is robust that when you actually take care of people and help them, it is actually cheaper than letting them suffer. And lastly, I would really like us as a community to continue the path of moving away from the metric, which has been a historical metric for, for West America, where we measured what we were doing for homelessness on the amount of resources we devoted to the problem. We intend to measure our results based on the number of people who rejoin society, the reduction in the number of people who die or injured, and, and the number of neighborhoods that are negatively impacted. Is there a different one, too? So to answer your question about if there's an upper limit? Yeah, I think that it's considered less than what we've got. But the goal is, from, as I said before, if we're not taking care of our weak folks, what are we doing?
Thank you. I have myself, Mr. Wellington, and Mr. Constance in the queue. I was hoping to turn to audience participation no later than 10 after 1:00. So if anyone else would like to jump in the queue, be sure to let us know or let me know. So I have two questions. My first is, Dr. Morris, you mentioned that your plan builds on the demonstrated success of the Sullivan arena. And that your plan would give the community the moral high ground, we've got a better place for you. How is that different than now? Because we're still experiencing visible homelessness now. You know, I have a hard time reconciling if we've done a really good thing at the Sullivan and with a mass care facility, why would a different location alter the outcome, particularly around visible homelessness? And then I think particularly in Midtown, you know, district I represent, and that those folks, you know, I've talked with them and they're in Midtown because that's their neighborhood. So what would incentivize them to go to this facility and reduce that visible homelessness?
The short answer is, it's one every place else, best of it. But in, we're not just moving to Sullivan. We are building a place that is different than Sullivan. Sullivan was envisioned to be a safe place to sleep. And some services were added on. This place is designed to be a place where we can be a hub for services and engagement. Mr. Perez, you mentioned this is outreach is a key component. We haven't done that piece yet. But no, there is no guarantee that a person will go to any particular facility and work around people on the make them go. But it, I think that it really informs our citizens that if that person is there, they've got a better choice than they could be making. And they can actually inform them whether they choose to give to that particular person and facilitate being able to stay in that location. And it will allow us to, as we said before, have aid camps. And if folks are sleeping in that area, they're going to stay in that area. I spend time where I sleep, I spend time where I eat, where I make money. And we can, we can detail those things of those behaviors that can really impact other people.
I will take exception that there aren't services at the Sullivan, there are quite a queue, and there is a service hub at the Sullivan. It's something that was actually piloted quite successfully at the Sullivan arena. So I appreciate the answer, but I don't foresee this being significantly different. I wanted to talk a little bit about the policy of the Assembly as it's been set to date and this plan. Back in 2018, there was a resolution passed by the body. And anyone who is here, because it creates me, correct me if I got it wrong, which the policy was that we should have distributed shelter system throughout the municipality. And then recently, the body passed two different IDOs that essentially provide an initial cap on facilities at 150 individuals without either appearance or approval by the body. So how is this, how can you reconcile this plan with the policy that's been set by the Assembly? Thanks.
Well, I'm aware of the recent addendum to the licensure that was voted on on Tuesday night before we met on the Wednesday to have a roundtable discussion last time. And I understand, it's hard when folks are thinking about going a particular way, it's hard to change. You can change a little bit. hard to change, you can change a little bit different, not a lot different. And what's happened is with the new administration, folks taking a new, came in with a new goal, and that goal was everyone, and when your goal is everyone, you just hardly get there with a number of 100-person shelters stretched around town. So we're going to have to talk about that, and find a way forward together. That doesn't mean that there's not room for permanent support housing in different parts of town. It doesn't mean that there's not room for very low-income housing. All the other different things. But it makes the most sense to have one purpose intentionally designed emergency room hub facility, though by the way, doesn't cost too much more than building a small one, at a location that is thoughtfully chosen, rather than simply picked because it happens to be a building, as we're saying.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. President.
Just to make sure it's clear what Dr. Morris said, we understand that the orders were passed, and the one specifically said, even under an emergency order, 150 beds limited unless somebody approval. That's why we are working with you and want to work with you, and want this to be a joint effort, and results in the Assembly agreeing with us. We understand that to come to the Assembly for approval.
Thank you. My last question, and then I'll go to Mr. Weddleton, Mr. Constance, and Mr. Rivera. What's Plan B if your facility or appropriation is not approved?
If it's not approved, the damage is scriptable. If it's not approved, we will build for a smaller size, we will try to meet the needs, but there will be people left uncertain in this community, and we'll pump the problem down a little bit more. We would recommend that we approve this plan, and we continue the conversation as to how to provide the treatment, the housing, jobs, what's needed after you've sheltered the initial 2021 to 2022 winter homeless people.
Thank you. Let me step out, Mr. Weddleton.
No, thanks. Just a somewhat random question, I think, you know, the licensing says, basically my phrase is no tolerance within a quarter mile of a shelter. So this would apply to this one too, so are you, I support that. So are you prepared to deal with that? How would you handle that on the ground? I think a lot of people are really worried about the nearby trails and so on, and that's what this no tolerance issue is about, wherever it's located, that kind of spin-off issue. So anyway, how will you handle that?
We've been in conversations with the university, they have a place for the APD, the community neighborhoods around here. It would absolutely be a focus area for all enforcement to make sure that danger is within norms, and we're also, we've heard the public area about the fire risk. There is a fire risk there, we've had two major fires since 2016, and that's a legitimate concern. The Department of Labor has plans for how to mitigate that risk. But it's simply a matter of focusing our resources there to make sure that it's not a problem.
Okay, you have a question, or do you want to count them out, or can I go through them?
Please go ahead and go through them, I hate to over-engage, I'd wrap up by 10 after 1.
So we kind of have a distributed system now, right? We have, you know, restorations over further up onto the road, we've got Clearhouse, we've got Covenant House, we've got Brother Francis, and so on. And some of the emails we've been getting from people supporting this notion, say we need all the homeless in one location. And I'm guessing, right, he's not closing those other shelters and putting them all here, is that correct?
Well, first, I think you're giving some emails in support of the notion, because I only afforded the emails that aren't in support of the notion against. Absolutely, you are absolutely correct, I've done a very poor job of messaging that. We do have a distributed system, we would increase the distribution by building this shelter, and we have absolutely no desire to reduce the activities of the current existing shelter providers, in fact, the people we've been talking to have come up with this plan.
Okay, thanks. So right now, there's a Plan Y here in Razzle Center, buying, planning to buy the Big Staff A building on Third Avenue, create a navigation center there. Do we need one there as well as one, this new site? Have you been talking to them about how to coordinate Razzle?
We have been talking with them about that specific issue, beginning this week, probably a week after, the wires and that complication for a couple weeks. Do we need two? Well, we can probably use six. And it's coming from private fund, it's not our pocketbook, pad. And guess what, if they do something better than what we do, we'll go over there and steal their idea, and we'll start going to. So we don't have any problem with them doing that, and we support them.
Thank you.
Mr. Constance.
Thank you. I appreciate this message that our goal is everyone. If you look back over the last four or five years, there's a tremendous amount of data that demonstrates that's the goal we've been striving toward, so it's a valuable goal. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Mr. President, Dr. Morris mentioned the mobile crisis team, when Ms. Zalatall referenced outreach, and I want the public to understand that those two things are very different things. The mobile crisis team is our relief valve that we're helping put into the system that provides a behavioral healthcare responder, as a media first responder to crisis moments that are occurring regularly in our community, that do happen to be often homeless individuals who are experiencing the crisis, but it's very different from the outreach function that we did budget some for and have had some success with, but certainly is, you know, from the perspective of a navigation center, the tool that functionally in homeless services across the country moves people into the shelters to, or the navigation centers to actually find a place to go. The challenge with outreach, I'm looking towards third-party providers, like nonprofit providers, is for the most part, in the outreach world, they only do it unpaid. And so it's part of our duty to figure that out. My, Ms. Kennedy, you asked a question about what's kind of the ceiling of the expenditure, or how do we wrap our minds around the cost? And I continue to point to successful programs that did this, which is create a pretty centralized to kind of one point, single point of entry model. And the two that continue to come up are Reno and San Antonio. And they do, I don't know about Reno, it's too new to benchmark, but the San Antonio model has been able to successfully mitigate the impacts of the program to the point where people actually bring their children to the childcare facility within the service array who aren't homeless, right? It's really well supported by the community. The thing about Reno, and especially San Antonio, is they invested $100 million in capital, and then tend to spend somewhere between $10 and $20 million either operating. And so I want us all to be very cautious about thinking that we achieve any of these goals by saving money upfront. The way we save money in this system is by stopping and backing expenses, the expensive cost of police and the fire services, but we actually can't get there unless we're willing to spend. And so the plan is pretty critical moving forward to address how we're going to achieve a place that provides body care, at the same time does mitigate the impacts to neighborhoods in such a way that we aren't destroying the integrity of the neighborhood like we have done in the past.
I agree with all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you. A few points for me. So first is, earlier in the meeting today, Mr. President asked about the endorsements that the administration has received from providers. And as members of this body know, I tend to ask this style of question. What endorsements or conversations has this administration had with people experiencing homelessness?
First, I'd like to say that I'm claiming no endorsements from any state over whatsoever, even ones that do. Second, as far as conversations with homeless persons, firstly, I had many, I don't know that a count would be in the dozens.
Yeah, and so I guess, just to follow up on that particular point, in those conversations I've had with people experiencing homelessness on this specific model the administration's been forward, what has been the feedback you've received in general?
Well, there's a selection bias in talking to homeless persons. All of half will not talk to me when I attempt to engage. So for those folks, and those are the folks that we have to be particularly conscious of in designing the facility, frankly, because they're more likely to have had trauma, or had injuries, or mental illness that requires special attention. Of the folks who would talk to me, it was unanimous, sort of short bar, so, that they requested that things be, services be located at where they were staying at their shelter. Other common requests were, they liked, they usually were chores or things to do where they were staying. And the third one that struck me was that multiple people asked for church services, or transportation and church services from their facility. Other than that, it was a number of folks who had complaints about different things, and it was fair to them.
Thank you. So a couple more, Madam Chair. So first is, just responding to a comment you made earlier about the 2018 resolution. And the resolution was a little bit broader than just shelters, it had to deal with distribution of homeless services. And then third, followed up on a question that Ms. Zalatall asked. You know, particularly for me, you know, there's been a lot of focus on the capital side of things, but I'm particularly interested in the operations and the programming side of things, and we haven't really delved into that too much. Ms. Zalatall asked, I think, a really important question, which is, how is this going to be different from what we're currently doing at the Sullivan Arena? Because as Ms. Zalatall has stated, we're doing quite a lot at the Sullivan Arena right now. So if we have specific outcomes that we're trying to achieve with this facility, which I haven't really heard those tangible outcomes yet, then how is the program, our operations going to be sufficiently different or expanded from the Sullivan that allows those outcomes to be achieved?
Well, sounds like I need to make sure I clarify something, that I don't want the word to get out that I or the administration thinks that the party services going on to Sullivan. We know that Beans and their partners have worked quite a lot down there, and we know that. We're building on that, and folks that we've talked to. One way, I think, that we could illustrate how this facility would be different, at the Sullivan, you have beds down where the ice cream was, you've got beds around the different flat area walkways, and you've got all the services at one end there, you know, where you go through stores, you go to the desk in the room, certain hours of the week. And in many ways, that is representative of the first for our community, it's dramatic steps forward, we've done a lot of good. We built on that, and in this facility, what we're talking about, building, each area where people sleep has a desk in it, where there's a person that sits there with them, knows their name. And that's an innovation that the Sullivan came up with just a month or two ago, we built on that. Where they, they assign their personnel to know, this set of beds ensures, build a relationship with these folks. We're going to hear that, where there's a persistent presence of someone there for people to talk to, if they know, and take that first step, which is trust, before you think you can do outcomes. As far as the measurable outcomes, our variable outcome is, is an unpermitted place to stay. And our secondary variable outcome is, not any longer waiting for that. We're going to have, this is a safe place first, and we're going to kind of take the medical suspenders approach, where the medical suspenders is, we're adding the services to help people get to the housing while they're there, and removes a lot of the barriers of people not being successful when they get a place to stay, or maybe mismatched in an inappropriate place to stay. In addition, specifically, we've reached out to a number of other non-traditional stakeholders who can provide culturally extensive things, services, which frankly, I just have to assume I'm ignorant of. So I asked them, and I'm kind of excited about the opportunity we've got to work with these folks. So we do have a remarkably different collection.
Thank you. Just one final comment, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for that response. So I think from my perspective, I think Mr. Constance, we hit the nail on the head. It's hard for me to imagine, and perhaps I'm just not imaginative enough, that $1 million a month in operations is going to cover all of these things that we were talking about. So I think at some point, I think this body, this community should really delve deeper into some of the operations aspects of this shelter, because I really want to understand, so the day in the life, what is it going to look like from when you get up to and you go to bed? So that's something in the future, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I don't believe there's anyone here from the former administration that can speak to this, but I think the characterization that the elastic club property was purchased because it was just really happy for sale, I think is not what was reflected in the many, many briefings we had about this last year. But Mr. Campbell spoke, in reference to Ms. Zalatall's question on what's Plan B, it sounded like it was sort of a take it or leave it approach. We can do this, or we build a smaller facility, and people are unsheltered. But there is a viable Plan B in the elastic club facility, and the smaller facility together. And so I'm wondering if you're concerned about removing the viable Plan B by not taking action on Friday, is what. And the second is, I certainly intend, once you introduce this item, to set it for a public hearing, which will require you pushed out to the next meeting, and it would be very extraordinary for this body to pack something of this size in for without a public hearing. And you can see what happened last summer, where we had day after day after day of public hearing, week after week of public hearing on a similar proposal. And that likely will push any opposition that might come until the late July. And so my question to you is, how does that impact your thinking, and your timing on this proposal, and on any viable Plan B? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ray Campbell, we did not, as the administration, need to characterize that the elastic club is just being purchased or sold. We understand that you're looking at an option for that part of town to solve a problem. And we actually agree with the fact that that part of town may be an appropriate place to have some facilities in the future. We're talking about the short-term winter coming up right now. We need to get the shelter in place to provide the services for all of the homeless population that's at risk through this coming winter. But we do think that next year, and we're looking into the future, that the part of town where the elastic club is located, may have a viable reason to be, to provide some services, whether it's treatment, whether it's shelter, to be determined. So I think we've got to bifurcate the issue. We're really talking about this winter, and being able to handle the homeless that are going to be on the street in the camps that we have in the woods right now. Then we can continue this journey and dialogue about how do we do, provide the long-term care in parts of town where the need really does exist. So we're not trying to say, this is one shelter, is this answer for the eternity of anguish, this is this coming winter.
Yeah, I mean, just to follow up to that, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, you're talking about building a new facility, and that being a more viable long-term, a short-term option than an existing building that we could retrofit, and that we've been studying for the last year. Why isn't that part of the short-term solution as well?
Madam Chair, it's great, and I'd rather want to share this with Dr. Morris, but I'll go back to the meeting you had here about a month ago with the previous administration. And if I recall correctly, the answer was that the elastic club, even under the current plan, would not be ready until the end of November. The problem starts in October. We need this facility in one right now.
We need this facility one right now. So that means we provide the facility, provide the care this winter. And we do look at what other options might be available to expand services in the coming years, which includes midterms.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. For members, if you recall, there's an email with an update on the timeline of the Alaska Club that was announced at last meeting. I'll recirculate it. I kind of want to mention the date without ciling it. But if I can find it within the meeting, I'll just tell you all what the updated date was. Ms. Allard?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I just have a few questions to fill out here, a little bit, or statements. So I want the administration to be extremely careful about referencing the Sullivan Arena, in my opinion, in my knowledge of the Sullivan Arena. You say it's been a success. I would disagree with you. There have been sexual assaults. There has been assaults, physical assaults. There have been a lot of things going on at that arena that I would not want to carry over. And there might have been some successes, but when you shove a whole bunch of individuals that have nowhere else to go, you're going to get backlash. And what my concern is accountability, because what I've heard all day today during this workshop session is the administration hasn't said one thing about holding individuals accountable. So if there is a person that does need help, I get it. But I also know individuals need to be held accountable for their actions. But what I wanted to follow up with is that in regards to this being a temporary shelter, I think we're on the right track. I've been leaning back and forth trying to figure it out. But what I don't appreciate is when fellows, assembly members say we have to put our individuals, our homeless individuals inside of a facility, but then they flock because we're putting them inside a facility in their particular district. Now, I will say the location that the administration has chosen is a good location. And Dr. Morris, I will also add that you do have a lot of emails and I can forward to you of the support that the administration is giving for this. But again, I just want to make sure that we hold individuals accountable. And that if this is truly a temporary facility that we could use in the future as a dual facility for other crises can happen in the future, that would be great. But just, we didn't even take in or mention the fact of the successful Hope Center and the Gospel Rescue Mission. And I think that when we're speaking about successes, that they should also be implemented and their commerce or their voices should be heard in this too. Chair, I don't really actually have a question. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. I have one last question and then I am going to turn to audience participation. Mr. Oliva and then Mr. Stang are the first two. So if you guys want to get ready. My final question is, what efforts are being made to support or establish shelters to increase their census or where there is vacancy currently to transfer individuals from Sullivan to those openings? Right now, there are 58 openings according to the dashboard today. And 20 of those are produced, 18 to 20. So it looks like there's some space in these existing shelters at the lower capacity. But with the new CDC guidelines, what are we doing to support those established shelters so that we can reduce the need for capacity by utilizing what's already there?
We applaud the money that has been sent from the Assembly to a number of different shelters here in town. We have not done really any planning on expanding their capacity. We have, we let them do what they are good at. And they tell us what their capacity will be. We say thank you and ask what we can do about it. Back to what, this is the member I was talking about, accountability. I just want to address it briefly. It is a failing moment. We take for granted sometimes that some messages are sent. If anybody thinks that this mayor and this administration aren't about holding people accountable, I would just consider that one. And the structure that we're planning for the facility, a different level of accountability where the city owns building and contracts with providers, allows us to have a very, very close eye on accountability for outcomes. And we intend very much to put a lot of energy into that.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. Mr. Oliva, you're going to kick us off for audience participation. When you come to the mic, there's a yellow button for those who may not have testified before. It's three minutes. I only have my phone timer. I will show you.
Oh, if you give me the warning and kicking it off, I might go all the way to the door and face the door and kick start.
Mr. Oliva, please.
Well, you mentioned kickoff, so I thought that'd be a good way to start.
You may begin.
Okay, thank you. Paul Oliva, adjacent to the shelter, B. Staff A. Allegedly, my land was to be purchased. And this was two and a half years ago, if not three. Two parcels, one was blocked by MLP, shorting the $200,000 block for under assessment, with the promise that you would buy the rest of my parcels and add back in the shortage. That didn't happen. I was first in line. I was dead. They did an additional $50,000 study. And hey, you went out and bought these other parcels and spent money like it was water. Good water, not fluorinated, chlorinated. But it was terrible. And then this idea of what happened to me, you're pledging the debt. After two and a half years, I ran out of money. The cap slowed, the pandemic, the labor changes, the timeline, the contracts I had in place. All of this fell through because I was short the money to move. And even getting a grant for Habitat to get them to take $200,000 in real inventory to sell for supporting housing, they didn't come forward. The tax penalties I endured for being late and then the unfortunate chlorination disinfectant conviction, I got sentenced to a year in jail and of course, over $200,000 in legal fees. I'm a little perplexed and upset, not angry, just upset, that when they say audit and hold accountable, I don't understand how I got kicked under the bus, yet Beans gets bottled and you give them $750,000 additional dollars? 30 seconds? Root?
One minute. Go.
One minute? Okay. I don't understand that. You're having a navigation facility. Beans says they make $1,000 to $1,500 meals a day and deliver them for Kids Kitchen. And yet they got to find another facility downtown, temporary, as an investment. And guess what? Two words would solve making meals at Kids Kitchen for the homeless. It's called night shift. They didn't need to move. And I think it's disgraceful. And I think not only the inspector general should be called in, but an independent commission of every nonprofit in what they're doing with the money. Because hey, it's theft and corruption. And Brother Francis is just as bad, never following their conditional use. And that licensing isn't going to work. So with that, I would like to put into play for the quarter of a million.
That's your time.
I didn't pay for the quarter of a million you shorted me. I can use that money.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva.
Are there any questions?
I cannot see any. Thank you.
Okay, no, we don't there. Let me grab your hand. We'll see.
Ms. Oliva, thank you. Paul, welcome. Please come on. Isan, you may go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Paul Stani, President of the University Area Community Council. We strongly support reduction of homelessness and anguish. We commend Mayor Bronson for addressing the issue, but believe the proposed facilities are too large. Smaller shelters of 100 to 150 beds have proven to be better. Clearly insufficient time remains to complete this stills facility by the onset of cold weather. The end of 2022 might be a target that you might meet. This shelter navigation facility is ill-defined and there's no Plan B. The logos of many organizations shown in the PowerPoint slides we saw from Dr. Morris seem to imply endorsement, but we've seen not one statement of support on the record. The 24/7 low barrier to entrance invites safety and security issues. And acceptance of pets increases sanitary issues. Serious conflicts with neighbors and an increase in petty theft may appear inevitable, do appear inevitable, and our neighbors have said as much. The risk of forest fires from nearby camps is likely to be high. Further serious overloading of Providence and AMNC emergency rooms will be expected. We request an independent assessment of the Sullivan Arena experience. We believe the mayor and Assembly should immediately seek an extension of the option to buy the Midtown Club. That option, as you've heard, expires this Friday. Consider purchasing an extension of the option. It would probably be cheap until you figure out what's going to happen. We request a detailed schedule of critical milestones for the proposal from the mayor straight away. How can this endeavor succeed otherwise? Without the information we requested, and we have numerous requests placed already, the UACC cannot make a reasoned judgments on the merit of this facility and its operations. In fact, no one can. So why fund it? The UACC already has a well-managed homeless facility a half a mile from the site. We look forward to assisting the new administration in finding an effective and equitable anger-to-act solution to this difficult problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have five individuals. Would members agree that we can extend the meeting to hear from these five individuals in line? Okay. Mr. Dar, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Ms. Oliver, did we ask about a change code to include that if an individual who may have tested positive and did not want to quarantine themselves, that we could physically remove them from their homes? I mean, some were in the COVID, was, did he help that? Can you help me out a little bit?
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, last month, when the pandemic started, we added a factor to the code. What do you, um, if we want to go on state law on quarantine and isolation and testing? And to provide a process about a death schedule to have someone detected and to, uh, to request, uh, help with a quarantine or isolation. And so the provision from that new state law, and he was like, for three terms, for no overwells. But I can see what you think, okay, you align that they, yeah, we would try to see if it was, um, he did for our area.
So that was from November 4th. If you want to look it up on YouTube. They definitely detained two individuals on record at the Sullivan Arena. I just want to pray and hope that never happens again with our new administration. And then I had a couple scriptures I was thinking about here in Proverbs. There's a couple of, I was going down there to pick up Tina to take her to the Alaska Tempur Bible. I saw her downtown, so I went the next day. She said she wanted to go. But Tina wasn't there. It was a good young man who was keeping accountability of the people that are inside of the Sullivan Arena. You know, there are horrible things going on inside of that place that do need to be addressed, like I would said, but Psalms 133, it says, behold, how good, how pleasant it is for the brethren to dwell together in unity. It is like a precious ointment upon the head that run down upon the beard, even Aaron's beard, that went down the spirits of the garments. And I was just thinking about these guys, my brothers that took the Alaska Tempur Bible around 16 until the 25th of July, it comes over and go. They're great guys. And where all this went, got the word of God, took them back to their place of their standing at the Sullivan Arena. And I was thinking about Acts 2. It says, "And when the day of the cross was fully come, they were all on one accord in one place. And suddenly came from heaven a rushing mighty wind, and filled the house where they were sitting." And if proceeding, oh, could I have one more? Men in there?
No, you have, you have 15 seconds.
Thank you, men. If we do this, we do it in love and we can't fail. It says that Christ may dwell in your hearts by faith, that you be rooted, grounded in love. You may be able to conquer him with all the saints. And then just when it goes on, now unto him that's able to assume it.
Thank you, Mr. Dar. That's your time. Thank you. Please go ahead.
All right. My name is Luvia Briani. And I'm actually going to channel Eugene Crawford-Faberman, since he's not here. This is a public meeting. The public needs to be involved. The only way to attend this meeting or to hear what's going on right here, right now, was to show up. I took a leave from work among my own personal time, burning my own personal leave hours to be here. Talking about stakeholders, every single person in this room is a stakeholder, whether they own their property or whether they're renting. Because the decisions that are being made and being talked about will have the potential to cause property taxes to go up. So first, after that, I would like to talk about three reasons why I do like the presentation given by the administration. And three reasons are that it doesn't cost a loss of revenue to municipality. It doesn't take a business or a building out of that revenue stream. When we purchase the Golden Lion, we no longer have that property tax revenue. We purchased the East Side Alaska Club, we lose that revenue. Then, by having multiple different places, we now multiply the expenses. It seems that this municipality is a very large constituency to invert the structure, having lots of supervisors and not as many workers. It's gotten better, but it's still there. We see in the school district especially, multiplication of expenses. And most importantly for me is that the administration's presentation could have been accomplished prior to the passing of AO 2021-54. They could have done it without the rule change to the B3 zoning, since it's already in the PLI. One thing to consider, or that I don't, well, I haven't heard at any of the meetings, is the impact that certain people's actions cause them to be homeless. And I'll explain real quick. You can probably hear from ABD, Chief McCoy, that if somebody, or they're called to a domestic violence situation, that somebody's being removed, somebody's being detained. And in essence, we are now making that person homeless. While it is great to get them out of that situation, where do they go? Do they go to the street? Do they go to the housing or to one of the homeless facilities? And I think that that's something that needs to be addressed. I mean, there are people who are being properly prosecuted. And then there are people who are manipulating the system, and they're both equally hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. McGrath. You need to press the button to turn the mic back on. It'll be a little, I believe. There you go. Please go ahead.
Well, my name is Tom McGrath, and I've been following this process for a lot of years, ever since Brother Francis was started. I believe it was right before Mr. Campbell, he came on this, I don't know, 2005. And over the years, I've visited a lot of homeless places. And there's not just, a lot of people think of the homeless as a guy on a street cart with some product or stuff in it. But there's a lot of families that are homeless too. There's a lot of kids that are homeless. And we've taken care of a lot of that. And when Mayor Berkowitz became the mayor six years ago, I was excited it was going to expand that. And we really had a community conversation. And remember the four pillars, three pillars, fairly well been taken here, but the fourth pillar, the homeless person on the street, we still haven't solved that. It's been six years. I really applaud the Bronson administration because they say, we're going to fix this so that next winter, nobody's going to die in one of the camps. And I really applaud them and I hope that everybody puts their efforts towards that because in the last four years, we've done a lot of good. In the last six years, we've kind of brought full, to fruition except for... In the last six years, we've kind of brought it full to fruition, except for we still have a lot of people on the street that would fix that last part, and that's what we need to do. And I do have a email string here from one of the Assembly people about the Alaska Club building. And it was dated last September. And I think we kind of agree that it was a shelter building. I still think it's a shelter building. Don't buy a shelter building. You know, and can we build this building in time for September? And I've built buildings in this town. You can build buildings, in fact. Yeah, they're all your dogs in order. You can build buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Dar. Can you pull the mic down just a little bit closer so we can be sure to hear you? Please go ahead. Thank you. I'm really blown away today by the fact that the administration is asking the Assembly to approve the appropriation of help of the common. But it just was me. Also, this meeting does not appear to be livestreamed. If it is, I wasn't planning to find that, so hopefully it will be available later for the public to see. I did have many questions for the Bronson administration, and I wanted to know where the public can obtain detailed information about the proposal. Some of the questions, what are the proven and outcome-based solutions that are informing your decision-making process? The administration has spoken a lot about Houston as an example to aspire to. However, this proposal does not follow the same strategies that Houston used to reduce homelessness by 55%. Notably, Houston uses a housing-first model and has reduced resources spent on shelters while increasing resources on housing and services. While they do have a comprehensive shelter system, with each shelter focused on serving a specific population, they have no mass shelters. The administration has also discussed how San Francisco's navigation centers have been so successful they have built more. Again, notable is that San Francisco built seven small centers of under 200 capacity and not one additional 1,000-bed center. This indicates that a small managed size is an integral part of their success. In addition to being more effective, housing-first solutions and not mass sheltering have been shown studies to result in significant cost savings to the taxpayer in lieu of paying for the emergency services that inevitably come along with chronic homelessness. Mark Eichbaum, who runs Houston's successful housing-first model, has stated that those costs have been reduced by more than 70% in his city. I also wanted to ask a little bit more about law enforcement's role. Do you intend to have a permanent police presence? Do you intend to criminalize homelessness by passing laws against camping, sleeping, and sitting in public? If you begin to cat and mouse game with these types of ordinances created, how will you mitigate against the increased danger of pushing the homeless deeper into the woods, parks, and neighborhoods? Where the danger of fire will increase as well as the isolation and will likely lead to more dangerous confrontations between people and more deaths by freezing to deaths deep in the woods. I am strongly opposed to a shelter of this size and scale. I would ask that you look at the options that the Assembly has put forward for small shelters and housing-first solutions, and also simultaneously focus on affordable housing. That will probably solve much of the problem. To that end, the hotels the last administration wanted to purchase don't seem like such a bad idea after all. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last participant for the day, participants, excuse me. Please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. So I live in, or we live in, I don't know that much about.
Can you step a little bit closer to my key? Can you also tell us your name?
Oh, of course. I'm Jenna. I'm visiting on July 34th, August 34th. So I, I'm just like a regular Anchorage person who lives in Midtown. I, what it sounds to me like is that, that somebody's been working on a bunch of ideas for a long time, and then an election happened, and now the politics are stopping those, that effort. And it seems like there's sort of like this threat that if this winter, people, if we don't build this shelter, this mass shelter, that people are going to die, that there's nowhere for those people to go. It seems bananas to me that we would, I understand, you know, stopping and assessing something when an administration comes in. I don't understand saying, if we don't just like move forward with this giant project in very few details immediately, like people will die this winter. To me, that seems like a hostage situation. So I don't have a lot of information or things on how the shelter should be, except that I don't want to spend a ton of money building something that's not going to work well, that we don't know, like. I keep caring, like, what's the daily operations going to look like? What are the services actually going to be? It's like, oh, we'll figure that out. We'll figure that out. Like, that's how it's going to be. We'll figure it out. I feel like that's like, that, it's not the building that makes it work or not. It's like all those details. I don't like the details, right? That's like the whole project. So I, I'd really like, you know, what I would like to see is people safe and housed this winter, not dying. And I would also like to see with a reasonable amount of time and information given and researched by the experts before spending a whole ton of money on a new project. Thanks.
Thank you. Happy early birthday, little one. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you for joining us today.